I had a call to order this work session and it's concerning EMS in the county. And just to take that all three commissioners are present and we'll get started. All right, well, as many of you know, we've been working hard on trying to crack the nut of EMS and how we move forward and, you know, what things look like. And, you know, we have several agencies in the county that do provide a great service to Preston County's residents. But, you know, we just keep coming up short. Not that the service is not being provided, but you guys are just pushed to the max. And so, just looking at some different options, you know, I always, you know, attending the EMS advisory meetings, gathering information and input from multiple people within the EMS world locally and outside of the county, looking at, you know, talking with some folks on different levels that advocate for EMS and, you know, just trying to get a better grasp on what the real need is and how we can best assist EMS. I had Joe, our coordinator, pull some figures. And since 2018, well, in 18, 19, and 20, the county commission at that point only was giving $3,000 a year to EMS. And let's just put it bluntly or frank as Hunter says, let's just be frank about it. That's not...
Not adequate enough.
It's not. And so, for 18, 19, and 20, the Preston County Commission allotted $36,000 in tax dollars to the current people doing the EMS service in the county. And that's not very much. Sadly, we have gone through a pandemic where additional funding was available that we could certainly look at allocating some additional funding that way. And I feel confident that the Preston County Commission did rise to lending some additional funding that way. So with the payments that we've already, first of the CARES funding and then, of course, an additional tranche today after today's meeting, we, before today, we were at, we had did three allotments of funding of the CARES funding to our EMS. First in November of '21, we were at $72,306 was the very first of the CARES funding that we dispersed out to the EMS. In May of '22, we did another $61,802.99. And then in September of '22, we did $64,723.81 for a total CARES contribution of $198,562.80 to just EMS. Putting that with the 18, 19, and 20 contributions that the county commission traditionally did brings the total contribution since 18 to $234,562.80. So to say that we kind of stepped it up a little bit, I think is good. I really feel confident that that has been an impact in each of your organizations, you know, as a whole. It had to help tremendously. But looking at it like that, but that does not address the continued need for something. And again, I feel strongly, and most of you would probably agree with me, that $3,000 a year, we can't just revert to that just because there's not money falling from the sky or a lapse again. You know, we have to, we have to come up with a more concrete plan to sustain EMS to some degree. And so, working with our OEM and 911, you know, directors and assistant director, you know, for us, they're our professionals. And so, plugging into them, getting input, opinion, and facts are the most important thing that they can bring to the table in these types of work sessions. Justin has put together what I feel is a really good representation of what we need to be providing in the county as far as EMS goes. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Justin and we'll get started.
So one thing we did is we were, you want me to start with this first? You want the map first?
Well, to just, the reason for this is with the committee, with the EMS Advisory Committee, I believe Dr. Conley and Dave, our former Commissioner Dave Price, set a 45-minute... Help me out, Justin. Response.
Yeah, they, so the committee initially started a dispatch to and route and then a dispatch to on-scene time.
Right.
So currently, and then, just let me throw those up. We can do the reports first.
Yes, still see.
Yeah.
That's your interview anyway.
Does that help? So he doesn't trust.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So what, the first thing was an on-duty crew and then the volunteer crew. Enrouts were different for the, we've got...
Kill all those lights, please. Shut that light.
Right up the top there, maybe.
It's not that, it's the lights. It's the overhead lights.
Is that the same?
Yeah, that was that for a while.
Here, let's pass out some, let's pass out the figures, too. That way you have a paper copy in front of y'all.
Popcorn, okay.
So this is, this is what we pass out at the committee meetings as well. So all the committee meetings have these. This is just an actual hard copy of it, so. Take one of those and pass it on. These are all different, so make sure you get each of them.
And I, you know, looking and participating in your advisory committee meetings, I, it's difficult when you have a commissioner there and they're thinking maybe what they're thinking. But the fact of the matter is, is those three of us and we can't take official action or make promises, you know, or any of those things. We've got to be convened in a meeting setting to do that, and so...
And I think you guys all understand.
I'm sorry I giggled up.
I'm sorry.
You're fine, you're fine.
So, Justin, now...
Yeah, so the first thing, and you'll see up here, this is the parameters, as I said. On-duty crew should be en route within five minutes. A volunteer crew should be 15 minutes en route. And then we also have a 45-minute on-scene time for this battle emergency. So if you look at your papers, some of them will kind of duplicate. What I did was, some of them will be like 21 and 22, the other will be 22 and 23, just so you kind of have a comparison from the year before. So the 22 data will be the same on both of those sheets. It's just, so these were our, these were our numbers. These numbers come from the Indian Services themselves. Their reporting on this part is a little bit better. So what they do is they get those numbers to me and then I just upload them to the spreadsheet. So like if you look at Station 3 here, times dispatched to and route average, you can look here and see. And if you go down to Station 4, and I'm really glad that all of the squads that rolls work have theirs turned in, so they've all done a really good job of getting that call up.
Thank you.
Yeah, Melissa, the normal rule, we jolly getting those into it. So your stuff is all on to par. We've got it all recorded here now, so.
Thank you, Bruce, for getting that in.
But this will show your averages and I charted when I made it smaller to kind of look a little bit more there, but the numbers are the same. Of course, Rollsberg hasn't been taking too many calls, so even if it would be turning it in, there'd be a lot of, you know, a lot of zeros. So it really wouldn't be changed dispatches too much anyway. But you have all this in front of you. So this is showing their en route times dispatched to and route. And then if you look at the on-scene times, you'll see this. It'll give their, their average on-scene times for the month. And if you look to the columns to the right, those are timed and you'll see it on both pages, kind of yellow coffee in that. That's how many times that they were outside of that response limit. So the first column is their actual average. But like this here is, you know, 5.71 en route time, but there were 289 times that it was greater than the, this would be tear out, this would be greater than the five-minute mark. If you let me can.
And is the five-minute mark what we...
That's what...
...were in EMS?
That's what the limit is set to.
And that's for, not for transports for, because they are...
Correct. Well, you can look over and you can, you can see. So there's a transport call. So there's 289, 134 was because it was a transport. So it's basically just saying the reason that it was over. And if you look at like the on-scene times, you have the same thing, you know, maybe it was weather or maybe the scene safety, they had to wait for a law enforcement officer to get there first or something like that. So with that being said, the committee, the very first choosing was five minutes and 45 minutes to get on-scene. The national average is just a smidge under 15 minutes with a 10% buffer, but there's, there's no way we can hit 15 minutes.
No, it's not for this size.
Correct, yes. But I mean, that's a, that's a rural setting. In urban, it's like 10 points something, but...
But let's be realistic, that's a rural setting.
Correct.
But that's a caveat. Barber County's a rural setting. Taylor County's a rural setting. It's a much smaller county.
Exactly. So, you know, to hold them to 15 minutes, the national average is just, it's just our topography and everything would really, it would be really hard. You'd have to have a lot of stations.
Well, and with, with stating that, I mean, 45 minutes is not, is not good. I think we can, I know you guys do better than that. You do much better than that. So for us, just to say 45 minutes, I think that's a slap in the face to what you guys are doing because you're responding much quicker than that in most cases. And so, I think that, you know, we need to look at changing that.
Well, I'll be honest with you.
I think realistically, they're making 20 minutes, but I think that's a good...
I think 20 minutes are reasonable. Looking at the stats, the on-scene times that you have given us, you know, there's, you know, Brewston's 11 minutes, but those stuff are 17 to 20 minutes. And I mean, to me, it's pretty reasonable to say 20 minutes.
And Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're trying to find ways to improve these response times with...
The response times are improved. I don't think we're trying to make that better. We're trying to give you credit. You're not taking 45 minutes. It's, you know, I think we could lower the expectation if we get to where we're going to create a contract to 30 minutes and you guys are still meeting the mark because you're way above that. Mostly, there are places in this county that are going to be over 30 minutes.
Well, I think that's what the map, when we see the map, that's where the map comes into play.
I'm going by the averages from the previous that he had sent.
Well, like the...
So like you said, the longest time I see on here for a month, even this, you know, you'd think it'd be winter time, but it wasn't. It was actually in the summer. It took longer.
The thing about it is, numbers kind of skew some too because if you have a lot of in-town stuff that's close and you have a lot of two minutes, then that takes away from, the problem is, the thing of it is, is you got to look at your, you got to look and see how many you're getting above that 45-minute mark.
Right.
Because that's, that's the, your average is good, but we need to try to figure out how we can get stretched strategically to get to these places quicker. Because, you know, even the national average is 15 minutes and they give a 10% buffer. So even if we would look at 30 minutes with that 10% buffer, you see how many calls you had if you run 1,000 calls, you know, then that 10% buffer says you're going to have 100 calls that you're probably not going to get. And that's kind of like an average. So that's the big thing is it's, you know, the 15.6 here looks really good, you know, and if, as we look down through, you know, it looks good. But if you're one of those 43, for example, on here, you know, to get to on-scene, then they're not having a very good day. So I think the, the point is, is they...
We're trying to improve the...
Yeah, like we're trying to improve the ones that are farther times.
So if you want to continue with your presentation, I think...
Sure.
...understand better as we get farther in.
Yeah. So this is one of the reports we run and we do this every month. You know, we do this at the committee meetings. So we, normally I'll email this out to the committee beforehand, but this is just a paper copy so everybody can have an actual hard copy of it. And like I said, you'll notice, you'll see a couple of blue sheets you have in your hand. It's because like this one here is 21's data and 22's comparison. So I wanted to give you a good look back here and then the other will be, is 22 and then 23. So we're working on it. Because 22 data will be the same on both sheets I just gave you on each side. So that way you can kind of track that. One of the other reports that we run each month is the percentage report. So probably that's my columns up here. So you'll look here, and this runs off of responses. And you'll have the same thing, I've got 21, 22, and 23, 23. But this shows how many times they were dispatched on emergency calls, how many times they responded on emergency calls, inter-facility transfers, and then like they're transporting EMS, this is like back to like patient residences or something like that. But it calculates the total number of responses. And the difference between responses and dispatches, of course, is this shows how many times a truck actually goes out. So you might, we don't actually have 5,650 calls. It's going to be less than that, but if you have two trucks go, it shows how many times they're actually on the road. So if you have a cardiac arrest and you roll two trucks, or if you have a car wreck with two or three patients, you may only have two or three trucks go. So that's why you have a little bit of a difference between your responses. But I think it's important to see how many times we're putting the truck out the door. And it also goes if they get stood down, you know. So if they go en route and then they get canceled, it still shows, you know, they're putting miles on the truck and they're putting, you know, expenses out going so the truck's actually responding. If you look here, it'll give you your totals, your emergency response totals, your transfer totals, your transport totals. It'll give you a total right here of your actual overall response.
And then the percentage of that calls that were answered by that particular...
Yeah, yeah. So like Brewston ran, you know, 13.42 of the total calls.
Right.
And you can look down here and see, you know, you know, Union ran 2% of the total calls in the county and, you know, so forth as you go down. Yeah. So there's that report there. And like I said, we track it every, every month. And we do this as a calls by area. So this actually shows what areas, and we, we still run these out of the old, when we had more squads, just so we could see like which area the county has it. So like when you see Station 3 here, you know, 1,010 calls, you know, Station 4, you just go across and then for a reason, this Station 15's over here and you won't see it on your papers because I had to calculate it a little bit differently because we took Station 69, the areas out. So it was given to Camp. And what I have to do is manually go through and look at the zip codes and the location of the calls and I have to manually filter those out, so.
So it's actually that...
The actual Camp.
The actual part would be the furthest, furthest column ever.
Yeah, so, so like this here, Camp took 252 calls.
Right.
But you had to take 61 out for Valleys area, at least 191.
What is OOC?
So those are out of county that we go out and help with, whether it be Taylor, Tutter, Thayer, Arbor.
There, yeah.
Yeah. Wherever. So those are out of counties is what those go for. But that gives you the monthly total.
I'm sorry, which station is tear out at, is that...
It's 11.
11, okay. Okay. That's what I thought.
Yeah. And then, see where other call. And then here's one, we started tracking the fire departments whenever, just this last year. So I only have 22 data for them, but we started tracking their first responder calls as well to see where they're, they're sitting at, you know, because they're helping try to cover some of this stuff until you can get an ambulance on-scene. So that's just some statistics for the fire departments running it as well. So getting back to our map here, you know, we were talking about, you know, our averages look pretty good, but we still got some holes because it's hard to get to. I wanted to be able to show like how far you can get from a certain location. And I have all of the, I have all of the squads listed. And I also went ahead and just put some other locations in just for the heck of it because that way you can kind of toggle stuff on and off and see.
Like Valley Point and Hayston.
Yeah, just because if you, if you would ever need to shift something a little bit one way, you know, if you can look and see this area covers really good this way, if you shifted it, you might not have to put something over here. And I'm just looking at, at, you know, just locations. So like, for example, just Brewston's at the top of the list there, so the very north. So this is how far they can go in 10 minutes. And our mapping guys did this, so what they do is he's got the, the main roads at like 55 miles per hour. The roads that we have marked as impassable or emergency only, then he sets them way down. So it should be...
As far as the scale of that.
Yeah, so it should be pretty accurate. I mean, they're really making better timing running code, but it's all will come out concretely washed, but he's got them turned down. So that way, you know, we can kind of look and see in 10 minutes if you've got Brewston there and you've got Camp in Kingwood, and then you've got Terada sitting over there on the east side. And Pam's got a truck down in Fellsville. I put Fellsville and Newburgh both because those were both near stations at one time. So you can kind of see where we're going in, you know, in 10 minutes. I'll forget the third one. Put them on. Because these will be the five that were actually, five areas that are running right now. So in 10 minutes, you can see where our holes is at. And then we'll turn those off. And we're going to do the same thing here.
Justin, can you do a 20-minute on that?
If possible. Let them get ready to.
All right, great.
Yeah, it'll overlay it. I can get that here in a minute. I just want to do them separately.
Yeah.
And we can look at any areas to see.
I just want to see if there's any shortfall gaps or anything.
Sure. Yeah, I think it'd be pretty welcome.
Just to answer real quick, I don't think there's that much, but I just want to double check.
Yeah, it, well, a picture's worth a thousand words. And I just thought, I thought this would be a better way to, you know, to kind of look and see, you know, where we have holes or...
Whatever. Great work, Justin.
I should have brought my mouse if you had.
Faker does a good job for us when it matters. He's very good.
So here's 20 minutes.
He doesn't know how to do it, his wife does.
So you can see, other than, there's a little, there's two little roads right here at the very bottom. And then you can get in...
That's Big Bear.
You can get into Big Bear. So you're actually, you're actually in Big Bear. So to get to these can only be about another minute or two. I think you could beat them most of those.
Yeah.
Because if you go to 30, it's going to say the whole map is covered.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, we could have him do like a 25-minute or something. But I just think that this gives a good, you know, a good outline of where, you know, stuff covers. And if we want to, you know, if we just wanted to see like, we want to do Camps here just because they're central, you can kind of see, you know, how much coverage and we can do this with all of them as well. But this will show you how much coverage you really do have out of one location as far as like your distance. So you can see a lot of the county can be, in 20 minutes, can be covered from different areas. But this just kind of tells you, you know, if we're, if we're going to try to knock those 45-minute gaps out, then you got to know where to be placed to knock them out. Because I mean, you got to be able to drive there and that's one of the biggest things. So that's kind of why I like this map. And we can do 15 minutes, we can do 25, I can do whatever we want.
So our placements are pretty good right now.
Well, I'd say realistically, on the outline areas of that map right there, you're looking at probably more like time the crew gets up out of, you're looking at 30 minutes that you're going to be there.
Yeah, this is ready to roll. So this is if you left, you know...
That doesn't include the dispatch.
Yeah, because you still have two or three minutes by the time you get dispatched, get in, get in the truck, or if it's a volunteer truck, you know, having to drive there and everything. So, you know, there are some caveats to it as well. And this is, this is best-case scenario, so.
That's assuming that you're in your territory.
Correct, yes. Yeah, you're not out on another call or, or something like that. So, but if anybody wants to see anything, any differences, I can show you whatever you tell me to punch up here, but if we want to do some other stuff like 15, 25, 35...
By the time you get to 30, you're out of it.
Yeah, I think that...
Do you have one there where you can see like, Kingwood, it's like Pisgah. We get called out there a lot where Mon County's a lot closer. We used to have that reciprocal agreement with them to do that. But I know it takes us quite a while to get there.
Well, but the bad part about that agreement was it's old and a lot of times they're just telling us no.
And that's what I'm saying, I mean, just...
I mean, with that one, you can just map quest it or Google it and get your driving time. I don't have like point-to-point on here, it's just...
If I could tell you, since I, I'm from Brewston, that's probably, if it's rough, an hour drive.
Usually takes us about 40, 45 minutes to get to it.
It's like Cobain.
Yeah, because you're out of the 20-minute mark there. You know, because this is, I've got 20 minutes pulled up in Kingwood. So you're out of, you know, you're out of that area and you don't even, that's not including your dispatch time and getting en route, so.
From here, 36 from here to the United Methodist Church and it's, it's...
I was going to say, I think you're, then when you throw your other stuff on top of it, your dispatch time, it's going to push it out a little bit further. So I mean, it does show you that strategically placed is, you know, does make a big difference because there's a lot of these areas that you're, you know, you're saying you can get there in 20, but that's best case. So you add a little bit of snow to it and you add, you know, the...
Right tradition.
Dispatch times and everything.
Yeah, we're in position, we have...
Perfect.
Yeah. So, but if anybody wants to see any of their areas, I can, I'll be more happy to... I don't think this is a county website map because it's got some, you got a lot of you to get it. It's kind of our built database, so I can't really like put the link out there on the area like that. But I can, I can do whatever if anybody wants to see some different configurations or anything like that.
And you can also show, like I say, if Brewston gets out on a call, then that area's not covered. You can show what it does when you have a truck out on a call that, you know, then you have an area that's...
Yeah, not covered. So there's Brewston's 20-minute time. Like I said, this is best-case scenario.
Or if there's not a crew in that day or anything like that.
Hayston County is a 20-minute time for Brewston.
Well, you would have to, you'd have to loop down. Well, you'd loop down.
Well, it's shown it full run, but...
You would have to. That's what I was wondering. You'd have to go into Mon County and go down like Snake Hill Road.
Well, I've seen like for, you know, from Kingwood to Fellsville, 20 minutes, you're going to be, you're not letting any grass grow in 20 minutes to get there.
It's the same way out of Hayston. There are calls where we go into Maryland and then come back in.
Yeah, because it makes sense. You can't get just the way it is.
Yeah, yeah. So like if you wanted to see the Fellsville to Newburgh comparison, for example. Newburgh. The 10-minute stuff is where you really see your holes because it'll, you know, a lot smaller footprint and, and like I said, we could have him do like a 15 even or something like that and it would help. Anybody wants to see any, let me know.
Have we done to 30 yet? I mean, is there any shortfalls at 30? I knew you had dispatch time.
No, no. And that's just, and that's pending that everybody is in place and everybody's ready to rock and roll. So if you, if you figure in that other part of it, you know, especially, I'm not picking on Union, but they're, and Rollsberg are volunteer crews. So whenever they have to get dressed in the middle of the night and, you know, even, even though they're showing they can get to areas, a lot of times a tear out is in station. We've seen it numerous times, you know, they're pulling on scene right at the same time because you got to figure the jumps that they can get while they're getting their clothes and stuff on or if the roads are bad, you know, you got to get the snow off your windshield. Um, while they're getting their clothes and stuff on or if the roads are bad, you know, you gotta get the snow off your windshield so you can see and, and uh, they'll pretty well be right there. So there's, like I said, there are caveats and common sense you gotta use um, with this, but you know, but uh, you know, they've been doing a really good job of handling their area over there. If you look at the numbers and stuff, they've been looking good and. And if they can take theirs and that means Terre Haute or, or somebody doesn't have to run over that area, because it's the thing, when you pull one for one and you're trying to backfill and then you've got a hole, so it's. You know, with that.
Um, one thing when we were, you know, talking with, um, well, when we had our last work session and, and Mon County had come up. I, you know, I've always, in any of the meetings that I've attended, um, I've never agreed with, we are basing any sort of funding on how many calls you respond to. Or if you have the majority of the calls. Um, I don't think that's a, a fair way to fund, um, because you have to be ready to respond. You, you know, you have to be ready and it takes just as much money, I mean, not as much, but to be ready to respond, um, you know. So to me, that's the more important uh, need is making sure wherever we have placement in the county, that they have adequate uh, funding equipment. So that they can respond if they get the call, um.
I know, and um, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's how they do it in Mon County.
Well, Mon County passed a levy and uh, their levy um, puts their funding into the most rural areas so that they are ready to respond. Because they have to be ready just as someone that's all constant.
For the, the shortfall, the shortfall areas, which is sometimes typically the rural areas.
Typically. Now, that's not to say that the funding doesn't go also to the other areas, you know, you have to, but you always have to be ready to respond. So based on calls, that doesn't, that doesn't make good sense. It just because one, you know, if someone's really busy and they have the ability to also build and get money coming back in. If someone's not busy, it still costs to be ready. So they've got to have the funding, so.
The only problem we're gonna run into with that is um, whether it was a levy or an ordinance with the people in the community saying, hey, my area pays more of a levy or fee.
Well, I mean.
I think that's, I agree with that. I think a lot of people, none going through the fire department levies and stuff. I, I mean, Kingwood was actually one of the big supporters.
Yeah.
And most of that money does not go to Kingwood. I mean, that's why I'm basing my.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
But I think people will support, you know.
Well, I, I think your numbers, they don't really matter in one aspect, but they do in another. You know, what they don't matter in is where you place them because it, you know, it might need an EMS unit there. Uh, so you don't really look at your numbers for, for that because those people are important. But the way they do come in important is you can look and see what your shortcomings are, so that way, you know, if you know you've got a hundred calls in this area. Then you can look and say, okay, it's going to cost this much to provide that service and we could maybe bank on this much coming back in.
Right.
Because if you're doing a levy or an ordinance, either one, you've got to know how much money you're going to come up with.
Well, and I'm just gonna go back to when we had given some funding initially um, to EMS and it, we did it off of calls. You know, Camp, she, you're providing what, three areas service? And so she got a nice tranche of money, you know, a nice pot of money, and it cost Union money to, to have to, it cost them a lot of money to be ready to respond. And they got nine hundred dollars. And so that was like, what are you gonna do with that?
I mean, it's just gonna, it's gonna have to be on a case to case basis. I mean, um, you can't just say that the rural areas are the ones that are going to be short following. But it's going to be a case to case basis from every EMS.
You've got to remember too, that they don't have payrolls and insurances and all this other stuff, you know.
That's what I'm saying, case to case basis, um.
Well, but two, what you do, it's just like, just using a candid example, if the Fellsville trucks not down there, then that's gotta be filled out of the truck up here. But if there's a truck down there, then that does, does create a shortfall in Kingwood whenever there's a train going on, a taxi call in Kingwood.
It comes down to needing more people. We've got to do something to get more people. We have the trucks, we have the equipment.
Justin, do you have other stuff you want to add?
Yeah, um, here's. That was. That just went with the uh, the last call numbers. I forgot to heat it up. It wasn't one of these great big sheets. Anybody else, anything on the map you want to see before I close it out, if you want to see like your coverage? If you do, just let me know. I can always run them and take a screen shot and send it to you too.
Would you want these in uh?
Uh, let's do. Yeah, just need them all up.
The more I may be way down there, but they still have the time available, it's less, you know, less than ten years old and.
And I mean, even if you want to compare Terre Haute and Camp areas, I mean, if you want to compare that, I mean, it still costs, example, a lot of money, even though she's not taking as many calls. The cost is still there to be ready to respond. That's.
Okay, so here were some numbers um, that you wanted to see. And see if I can, and Ling's handing it out now. So the. Uh, I will send you electronic copy. Yeah, you'll have the hard copy today and I'll send you electronic.
Because I was over the hollow, what's, you emailed us.
Yes. Yeah, uh, this was just with some updated stuff. So, um. So on the big sheet of paper, this is, this is just kind of a working draft copy, um. And if you look, here's just some demographics and some call statistics. I just tried to put kind of on a uh, kind of on a snapshot, I guess you would say. If you, if you look at the station, uh, it'll tell you how many areas, or how big the areas and square miles and how many structures we have. I based this off of the twenty twenties uh, population, uh, twenty twenty census. So they say there's about fifty-two, twenty-seven people per square mile. So this will tell you roughly how many people were in those areas. And I give you your population density, your, your calls per area in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then I went through and picked out like the highest daily average two days, so these will be your highest days for those areas. And then your eight hour, twelve hour, sixteen hour times of, um, kind of when your busy spells were.
Right, and that's when we actually made way back when, you know, probably, you know. Because it makes sense trying, when you're trying to schedule stuff to see when the, obviously, the most obvious time is gonna be, one of the high peak times are.
Yeah, and I mean, and you want to get to where you're going twenty-four seven because you want to have that state of readiness. Uh, if you have to baby step, this would be your hot times, but you know, your ultimate goal, I think end goal is to have, you know, that state of readiness.
Well, you want, yeah, and you, but you want to still be, like I said, efficient with.
Correct, yes.
How you're managing people and your resources.
Yes. Um, here's that piece that we need to look at and, you know, uh, we're probably going to have to get with, you know, the ones running the squads. Like we can, like I can show where the calls are at in the areas, but we probably need to figure out like, you know, what their returns are. So that way we can kind of get a guess amount of, you know, I think that's the piece you really need. You don't know, you know you need to fund something, you don't know what you need to fund yet. So, you know, if we, if we look at Brewston and we can see, you know, they had uh, uh, you know, ten thousand and ten calls, for example. Uh, we can say, okay, well, you get about a fifty percent return rate or whatever it is, and this is about how much we expect to get back. And we've got good numbers because they all have it. You know, they can say, we billed a million dollars last year and we got five hundred thousand. Pam's actually got something.
This is from last year.
Okay, so, you know.
Yeah, because you've given up.
Yeah. And that's better, that's better, yes.
If you're actually above the national average in collection.
We're at forty-five percent.
Yeah, so they've got their numbers and we can actually look and say, you know, this is what we've been bringing in, which is better than the guess because you're running off of actual data.
Right.
So that'll, you know, kind of look at that and you can say, okay, it's going to cost this much to staff this area. So that way you, at least you guys are getting a number of what you can do something with now, because right now it's just kind of a, you know, it's just a guess of what we think it will be. If you don't set your funds right and we're way under budget, then people's gonna be mad because they're paying for something or whatever and they're still not making a remark. You know, we see a dent where we need to be making. So, uh, you know, with the squad's help, I think if we can get this information, I can put that on there and we can probably get a little more true and accurate picture of that. Um, we've got Camp here now. I just asked her at the last meeting, um, because we were talking about it in the meeting and.
That's just what we billed and what we actually.
Yeah, and that's the best snapshot. I know it gets confusing because, you know, Medicare and Medicaid and this and that, but if we can see they build this and they got this, then that's a good solid number.
That breaks it down to what, what it was.
Yeah. So, if you know, and I think all their billing companies will probably print that out to everybody. So that would be a very good piece of information to get from them as we work forward into, you know, finding that number. Um, and one down here is a, just some cost factors. So this is what we put together. Um, I worked with our payroll department, our HR department here at the county and Dwayne, I looked at this. So this is if you would want to, um, FT is a full-time medic, IFT, you know, EMT basic and driver. Um, we figured, you know, full timers at forty hours and the IFTs at like a thirty-six. But um, this is what your project would look like over a one-year time. And, and this would be enough staffing to do, um, basically what we have it now is four, four medics, um, one backup medic, like a part-timer. Four EMTs and one, uh, because that would give you a twenty-four seven operation because two people per truck, you know, that's. But you can look here and uh, I'll send you electronic copy so you can change it. So if you can say, well, you know, we don't want to do any ALS at all, for example. I'm running a version on this laptop that, the laptop got fried and it didn't get my Excel put back on with the full blown. But anyways, you can change it here and it'll change your totals over here, so you can see where everything works. But we went through, this would be, um, when we did this, uh, you know, the wage and of course the hours, they give you that. And then we figured out how much each individual component would be. This is what the county would pay. The uh, the medical insurance, we picked the very top-notch one. Whoever was the most expensive one for the county employee, that's what we picked just to give you maximum numbers. Because, you know, some people wouldn't pay it, for example, if you were offering insurance, they would, you know, maybe they would only be a single plane. We picked the very top tiers because we didn't want to undercut anything to give you a true picture of what that would look like. Of course, insurance, workers comp, you know, this would be if they would take every vacation and CDO that they had coming to them, it wouldn't, you know, be carrying anything over. The only thing we didn't put in was overtime pay because there's so many variables within that, that you would need something in there, but it just depends. Because some agencies, it's, you know, if you're shorthanded, it's going to be a lot of overtime, but if you can get fully staffed, then your overtime's probably will be fairly minimal. I mean, you're going to have some because you're going to get stuck out on a call, you're going to have a few hours here or there. So, you know, you need a little bit built in there, but uh.
Justin, what are you basing the um, the amount of employees off of right there?
Well, if you run, uh, if you run two people on a shift, uh, twenty-four seven, you're going to have to have at least, at least eight people. Because if you figure in all of your timing, you're going to need like eight point.
Vacation days.
Yeah, you're going to need like eight point four two people.
That's the average agency.
For one truck?
For one truck, yes.
For one truck, eight truck.
Because like, same thing in our dispatch, so, well, we, we run two people on a shift twenty-four seven. And if you do the math out on it, you need like eight point four two, I think is what it is, people to do a twenty-four hour shift with two people. So there's ten on here.
That's a one point two five eight eight.
Yeah, well, this is with a, you know, some kind of administrator too. I'll put it up there separately. But um, and like I said, if you take this down, it's going to seem like a number over here. So let's say you would want to do like a, you know, a, a medic and a driver or an EMT and a driver.
Switch it up.
You can change this however you want. It'll change your formula over here and you can see what you're.
And then that's coming out to six hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Correct, that would.
No overtime.
That would be eleven people with no overtime, correct?
They expect insurance or.
Correct, yes. And that's if they took everything to the gill, like, because like I said, you know, uh, I can do a number with the low ends and, and show you comparison. But we picked the most expensive because that would be your cap, you know, um. Because like I said, that was with a family plan and, and somebody was the most expensive one insurance. Whereas, uh, you know, you're around some people who might not take it at all and some might be a single person and it's, you know, your numbers will fluctuate. But that would be kind of your worst case, um.
So say with Camp, you guys, how many trucks do you run? Three, so that would be times three. And then how much are you, with your billing taking forty-five percent, how much are you coming out at?
Maybe the paper there will be brought in.
So amount, amount bills.
We want to have circles what we brought in.
Gotcha. So the amount, uh, so she brought in one million, one hundred thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That's what the income was.
Yeah, multiply that by three.
Sure.
Is two million, six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight.
Right, but is that, are you running twenty-four, do you have twenty-four full-time employees?
I have not full-time employees. I have, um.
And you got to remember, the benefits is different too, correct?
I know, but this is, this is the goal. This is the goal we're trying to reach, right? So that's, this is what the data we should be looking at.
We're figuring it for two trucks, twenty-four seven. It's still a million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four ninety-two.
Sure.
And that's what, like I said, that's what's loaded up, you know, full fringe benefits.
We see there what we actually billed. If we got what we actually billed.
Yeah, it was two point five million.
I wish there was some kind of legislation from the national or state level to help with the billing stuff.
Um, I'll go down the bottom of this. Uh, I just kind of put in some estimates here of like, you know, some of the equipment that they have. So like, uh, you know, a type one box truck, new and used, type two van, new and used, type three, which many people don't run type threes too much anymore. But Rollsburg has one or two of them, I think, but most people don't run those.
What's a, you know, what's a type three?
It's a, it's a van front end on, on a, with a box, so it's kind of a hybrid. Instead of having like a F-three-fifty chassis, it's got an E-three-fifty.
They were popular in like the nineties, right?
Yeah, you still see them in a lot of city departments and stuff, but most of them are all, they're two-wheel drive and they just.
Yeah, Rollsburgs are both.
Yeah, they uh, yeah, Tunnelton used to have one. They had an E-four-fifty and it was their two-wheel drive unit and they've had their four.
I mean, they're substantially a lot less at cost, I mean.
Yeah, and I don't even know what a new one run. I didn't bother with a used van or a, or new one of those because we don't use them really much. But um, you know, Pam and Kelly both bought new, so here's about what they're paying for new boxes. You can uh, you can probably either do a refurb or a uh, or buy a used, good used one. Figure that hundred fifty thousand is that, that's probably on the high end of a refurb maybe.
I have a question for Brewston. So did that, um, how far ahead did get into your um, bed refurbished or your box put on a new chassis? Did that save money in the long run?
Yeah, it saves us money, but we have a good box to begin with. It all depends on.
That's the key, dude. You have to have, you've got a really good box.
What, what you're dealing with, what you got originally. I mean, most of the ambulances in this county are wheel coach. I think Terrell, he used to have O-Sage, don't you?
We have a McCoy.
McCoy builders, but uh, we have, those are all quality builders.
Yeah.
If you have an ambulance that the box was, uh, I'm not saying substandard, but not as good quality. There's no use putting a new chassis under it, because then you just have another.
It's just a jump.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
I think the prices on the apparatus, I think you're off a little bit on that, Justin, with just, with new changes and everything else. Uh, Mon County did buy, um, two of the van, the type three, uh, new. And, well, they were new used.
I don't have the new price.
And if you talk to the crew members, they all hate it. Ground clearance is terrible.
Yeah.
Uh, and they're having trouble with it even in town. I hate to see it try to run even around Kingwood.
Yeah.
Of Kingwood, let alone get out on any of the other roads. I think you're almost having to look at more.
And do we have any type?
I don't know. Rollsburg's being beaten around. I mean, I don't like them myself. Personally, I didn't care much for them, but they've been around for a long time. Like Rollsburg's still running too and Tunnelton had that old, uh, they had that E-four-fifty and it was.
Are you guys running any vans in the county type now?
Don't they have one two-wheel drive and one four-wheel drive? Because you've been with the Quagley, yeah.
In Rollsburg, I think so, yeah. I think they have a new beach. Tunnelton had. In Rollsburg, I think so, yeah. I think they have a lot of each. Tunnelton had a two-wheel drive, uh, type-three and they had a, uh, type-one.
I think the blue ones are four-wheel drive and the red ones are two-wheel.
What's the, what's the downfall with the vans?
Size, size, four-wheel drive, you're not going to get it in areas.
Yeah, can you get a four-wheel drive? They actually did pretty good. Um, um, the ones I've been in, of course, the old ones were kind of bad, because you had to run them quickly front end, or the quickly four-drives, they were heavy. They were actually overweight for the van even to honestly be legal, because, uh, it was an aftermarket four-wheel drive. They set up real high, they swayed a lot. But the newer ones that are factory four-wheel drives seem to be a lot, a lot nicer. And I told the guy, when I got the price off of this one, because I talked to a dealer up in Pennsylvania, I think is where it was. And I said, I don't want nothing cheap, but I don't, we don't want a Cadillac price either. I just want a good solid van. And that was, uh, about ninety-eight thousand for a brand-new four-wheel drive.
So a, a big difference.
Yeah, well, I mean, you, 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 when some calls are not going to work very good, you know, the boxes only gives you a lot more room and, and.
Plus the fact that our population in Preston County is larger.
Yeah.
I was getting ready to say.
We've actually had to take the cots and mounts out of our trucks and put them on the floor in boxes. I mean, so the vans. For body care, you can get both sides. You can have four or five people in the back of that truck trying to work for the rest.
But on the other side of that too, though, is you don't need that on every call. I mean, and when you look at a, when you're looking at vans, you're using gas engines. Gas engines right off the bat are ten grand less your maintenance costs and all that. So getting hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand miles of, of a gas engine, they were pretty good. I mean, there's pros and there's cons to each of it. And I'm not saying you have to split your whole fleet up and say you're buying all vans, but whenever you're looking at the.
Maybe one, maybe one van.
Yeah, but when you're looking at the price difference, you know, if you spend, you know, five hundred thousand dollars in, in two boxes, there could be a box and two vans, or, you know, or maybe three. If you can buy bulk and, and save like that. So, I mean, there are, you know, there is some.
Possibilities there.
Yeah, where you go, when you can take that money and put it into your, your people. And I know Mason County did this and they, you know, they, they went, I think, all vans until they could get their feet back squared up. And then I think they're buying boxes again. But they did it as a short term to get to where they could get kind of financially squared up, I think. And, and, uh, I was talking to my buddy over there. He was, uh, the emergency management director over there and they were kind of tied in with EMS. And I know that they, they had ran that for a while and then they, they're going back to boxes now. I think Marshall County maybe did kind of the same thing. They kind of got squared up and, and, um, I think they're buying boxes again now too, so.
And that's good, but, I mean, a lot of transports though that we have as well, we take a lot of transports and you've got ventilators and pumps and patients and you just shove all that stuff in a vehicle.
Yeah, critical care transport, it's, it's tight in one of those when you come out of there with a bunch of pumps. But if you're doing a BLS toto, it's really nice, because you're, you don't have nearly overhead in the truck and, uh, and you don't have to, uh, uh, they're a lot smoother riding. The vans are, are pretty smooth, actually, I think they are. They, they seem to ride a little nicer than what the heavier duty stuff is. But, you know, maybe you mix your fleet with a little bit of each, so you can.
Well, I mean, we could debate that, this all day long. I mean, it really comes down to each agency. You guys can purchase, you know, whatever, um, you know, you see fit. Um, I think it's, uh, this comes down to fiscal responsibility to have something in your fleet to some degree, um, that would be more cost-effective in certain circumstances. And, you know, if that's, you know, what needs to go and run, then that's what you send, or, or whatever. Um, you know, I've, I've been on a lot of roads in this county and there are a lot of places, and including inclines, that some of these lower, more low-profile vehicles just won't cut it. Um, but then there are certainly a lot of areas where a van would make sense if you're on good road. You know, the, our main thoroughfares, with the exception of a couple areas now, are pretty good. And so as far as making time transporting, if you go to Mon County or wherever you're running, you know, if you're just, you know, sometimes it would just make more sense to be more cost effi- uh, uh, efficient. Um, so, but I, I certainly like the, um.
Yeah, if any of you have bought new ones or got prices, give them to me and I'll update the list. I, uh, I kind of went off of, uh, when that type-three, I just was trying to search the used market. There are not a whole lot of those out there, but, but the type-two van, I did get a good solid price on it. And then, um, I think that's what around, you guys were paid for the box, was around two fifty or something. Yours was a little less, but yours was a little more or something.
Yeah, ours, ours was one ninety, but that was without cots, you know, we had.
One ninety?
Yeah, and the cots have went up.
And but what was your truck? It was?
It's not counting the power load system and the power cot, right around the two fifty.
Would say about fifty thousand probably.
Um, so I just got a quote for two new power load systems and two brand-new cots, the power load twos. It's hundred and thirty-one thousand for the systems and the cots. They went up.
So you're, you're, um, that was for two complete systems?
Mm-hmm.
So I need to change this one out to a hundred and thirty-one?
I've, I've got it.
Yeah, if you'd send it to me, I'll update their spreadsheet.
But I'm sure, I mean, expensive that sounds, I'm sure your back injury problems have went way, way down.
Yeah, it's when the workers comp in and keeping your people down, it's worth the money.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's, there are good places to spend your money.
Okay, so I have some questions. So Terrada, how many crews do you have? Just one?
We run twenty out of twenty-four hours. We looked at our, um, we took like a three-month timeframe and we had like one call after two AM. So we run two ten-hour shifts, six A to four P and then four P to two A. I think in the last six months.
If that, if there was, if there was, um, funding out there, is this something you would look at, just trying to run a full-time crew?
Yeah, we had, we had ran one for several months, but then since looking at call volume and the amount of calls and we were paying somebody to be there from two AM to four AM, or two AM to six AM to sleep. So we backed off.
Yeah, cause even on this thing that Justin goes, I mean, it's showing basically, in a sixty-hour day, your high times from seven o'clock in the morning till eleven o'clock at night.
Brewston, just after one.
The last thing you sent me, either was.
One crew.
Five calls made in the whole month. It was between two and six.
I can, I can pull up this one report. I didn't print it out, because there's a bunch of them, but if you do their actual, um, their actual call by daytime, so like.
And Camp has three.
So here was January.
Two to three, depending on staffing. If I have the people, we do three. If I don't have the people, we just have two.
So here is Terradas for January. And this will give them a breakdown of the, I'm saying, can kind of look and see.
Between two AM and six AM, I think I had five calls.
And that's pretty calm in most places, because I, uh, um, was doing just kind of some research with some of the surrounding counties and stuff. And I know like, um, like Mon County, when they're hopping at times, they'll run like fourteen crews, but at nighttime they drop down to like six. So, you know, we're kind of the same way. You know, you have your high times where you have the staff a little heavier, but you can back off maybe a little bit at night. But you can only go back so far, because, you know, I kind of ran some reports on, on some of their numbers and, um, I don't have them written down. I just got them on my phone, but I was looking at them, because, you know, they've got about with the college kids, because they don't carry college kids in their census, but there's almost thirty thousand students that stay there.
Well, yeah.
So you figure they've got about a hundred and thirty-five thousand population and three hundred and sixty-six square miles. You know, if they're running six crews, that's one for twenty-two thousand, five hundred people, where every sixty-one square miles. And when they're maxed out, it's one per nine-six hundred. But when you go looking at ours, you know, our population isn't too bad with our crews, but when you look at the, the mileage, you know, if we're only kept one truck on, then it's one for thirty-five thousand, one for six hundred and fifty-one square miles. So, uh, you know, we're kind of a big, we're kind of a big disadvantage, just because of the demographics and the terrain.
Well, not only that, but we're, I, I really feel, especially after talking to numerous people, that once, I mean, we meet the mark, but we don't meet the mark when large groups come in here. Um, then everybody's resources are tapped and beyond. And so, um, you know, that's another area that, uh.
I mean, you know, we've got thirty-five thousand population and they have thirty thousand people and they're on a good weekend in the summer. So you're doubling your county population.
I mean, I would say on a given weekend, with the events that take place in this county and the different organizations bringing groups in here, I'd say at any given time, we're doubling our population, you know, with extra bodies in the county.
Of course, I guess they'll do old people shopping and everything. You know, everybody, everybody's got to deal with that. It's just, it's, our, our geography kind of makes it a little bit more rough. They're three hundred and sixty-six square miles and we're six hundred and fifty-one. I think they have seven stations is what they cover with, but, uh, and it's hard to compare us to them, just because of the urban and, you know, rural setting. I guess you could compare maybe to Blacksville and see what they do out there, because that's a rural area. And if they, that would be the only comparison we could probably really use with them, I would say. Um, the only other thing I had was, uh.
A job.
Yeah, just a job. And this was draft copy only. Um, it's just something that, you know, if you're looking for something of that nature to kind of, um, you know, do all this work. I mean, we've been kind of doing it right now, pulling all the numbers and everything. And, you know, if, if you want to do it justice, you probably need to get somebody that can put a little bit more time and stuff into, where we're just trying to stay afloat with our, our, our normal daily stuff and try and pull your numbers and everything. And we're fine, you know, to try to help do it short-term, but.
I know, but I, I one hundred percent completely agree. If we have a county funding source, we need an administrator.
Well, that, well, you know, that can work with, with all of them on a more, one-on-one basis and have more contact and stuff and be able to.
And knowledge and.
Yeah, yeah. To, uh, but anyway, this is just kind of a, a rough draft of, of, uh, you know, something that can obviously be modified and tweaked wherever, but it's a starting point to just kind of look at.
I, I, I feel strongly that assisting our, our EMS organizations in the county that are currently serving and doing the work is important. But assisting those organizations, um, doesn't always come by way of monetary contributions. I think that there's a lot of things that the county can do better on to help with what you guys are doing. Um, granted, monetary, you've got to have additional funding. Um, County Commission's looking at two different, um, avenues that we can go to do that. But, you know, we've been very conservative with our budgets the last few years, with the uncertainty of pandemic and a lot of different things. And I think, I think currently, I think we can do better in our budget, uh, to get some funding, uh, going. And I don't, but I don't think that would be enough. One way that I feel would truly assist the current EMS, and, and by no way would this be structured to, um, hinder what you guys are already doing, or force you to close your doors, or overpower what you're doing, would be for there to be an existence of another EMS organization in the county. Um, not to, um, not to compete at, at all, um, but to assist. Um, you know, you can't continue to cover the areas that you're covering when you've got to run to Brewston or Pisguy or other places that you're going. Um, just as Kelly or any other group in the county, um, can't continue to do that and keep your first due areas covered properly. Um, so, I mean, like I said, there's other ways to assist all of you. Um, and I think, you know, looking at um, some of the options and, and different things that Justin has been able to, to put together, um, you know, which way we go, uncertain at this point, but we've been doing a lot of legwork to get something like that established. I believe the first, uh, whether we go with a levy or an ordinance or whatever type of, uh, because we've got to have something to sustain anything that we do. And so with that, with the funding, uh, coming in, we have to look at, um, you know, how's it best going to serve our current people doing the jobs? And, uh, I think the first step in the, in the right direction would be getting that person hired.
To assist us in that direction.
And that would be a tool in your toolbox. You know, that county person would be somebody that can assist your organizations, especially the ones that are on a volunteer basis and, you know, needing that assistance. I, I don't know. It makes sense to me. Um, and I think that, uh, I don't know. I, you know, at the end of the day, what you guys are providing is a good service to the citizens of this county. And I personally do not want to see any of you continue to close doors. We've had two, two agencies in my tenure that have just shut down. And then what happened to the stuff? What happened to all the items that, um, you know, their assets? County didn't benefit at all there. And there was money. Granted, three thousand dollars a year is nothing in comparison to what it takes to run EMS. Um, but still, over time, what was the investment of the tax dollar? Where did it go?
So, um, I guess if I could put my, um, input on that. So the way I look at it, whether we have a funding source, which is an ordinance or a levy, on my opinion, I can't speak for the other two, is we would have a Preston County EMS advisor, or, I mean, administrator, coordinator, whatever you want to call it, that would handle that stuff. And then I truly think that not to put any of you guys out of business, like Samantha said, but just a county truck on the ground to help services in the county.
To back up the current services.
Yeah, the current services.
Where are you going to get the people for that county truck? You going to take it from Mark, our spots?
Yeah, that's.
We're not, we're not going to try.
Justin, you're giving us your numbers on a, for pay scales?
If we get, if we get this funding in, the county rain system, if there was one, and the, um, current agencies, we would try, all try to work together to keep the pay and all the benefits, everything equal. That way we're not pulling from you guys. That's why, that's why we're looking at the numbers. Justin, your numbers show what, where we should be at with pay.
We have enough traffic people anyway, and you want to pull from us.
So would you have, um, well, I'm just going to ask Peggy. Uh, you guys, what was it, thirteen pers- what's the percentage of the calls you guys are able to respond to currently?
Thirteen point six five.
Yeah.
Would it be beneficial, Pam, if there was another truck, when they can't respond to something up in the northern part of the county, that a county truck would go do that, so that you can handle what you currently have going on?
I'm not saying that wouldn't be beneficial. Uh, what I'm saying is you're going to take from already strapped resources. We have a lot of E and, EMTs and EMSs in this county that go to Mon and Taylor County to work. That's the pool that we're trying to pull back into the county.
Well, if we, if we, if we get a funding source, if we get a funding source, and Justin, if you could pull your numbers back up there on what we, where we should be at. Pam, do your numbers?
I believe that's close to, to theirs.
Is, is that close to yours?
Fairly close, yeah.
Is that better, worse, or just the same?
I think as far as where we're located in Brewston Hills, that we need, I know they don't like to outsource things, but like if it is, like Pam said, if it's a Pisguy or it's at the fifteen mile marker, which is like the cutoff for everybody, if there, if there's access and so forth there, that we, we could access Mon County.
I'm telling you right now, that, that, they don't want to.
Oh, I know they don't want to.
I know, but the thing about it is when we call them and they just tell us they're not on, we can't depend on.
Well, I think if we can help you, if we can help you guys to where you have more, um, funding and you can provide, um, more services, then would you guys be able to make it up to Pisguy eventually?
Well, if we have more services and more things available, I'd like to put on two crews someday.
Well, that's where, that's what, that's where we're getting at here with this funding.
If Brewston had two crews and Terrada had two crews all the time, we would be having pressure. Everything would be covered. Wow.
No, not necessarily, because the truck down south, you'd be staffed twenty-four seven.
Well, we're talking about if, if they're down there twenty-four seven. But I'm just saying, it's, I don't think the, the answer is to put it on another agency, put all that money into that, hiring people, doing all this stuff, pulling from the people that we have. You know, because you're a twenty-four-seven crew there, you're saying, okay, four medics, you're going to take every medic I have. You know, you're just pulling from us to.
Well, our goal is, if there is a county rain system on the ground, that everything would be completely comparable for the city.
That's not the point. That's not, there's not enough.
You can say either way, because if they're county employees, we have a certain pay and we have certain benefits, we have to provide no matter what. So we have no choice. We have to do retirement, we have to do insurance, we have to, we have to do that.
But we've had conversations with, in, in the.
If we, if we gave you guys funding, and that's what our goal is, that we would try to make them make it, make the, um, numbers from agency to agency as comparable as we can.
You're still going to take people from a small pool. There is a nationwide shortage of medics and EMTs. What you're going to do is take from us, and then our numbers are going to sink. We're going to go under, and then the county has. What you're going to do is take from us and then our numbers are going to sink. We're going to go under and then the county has it.
Brewston, does your guys' numbers match this?
This side, not the benefit side.
Right.
And that's the problem.
As I'm saying, if they're county employees, we have to do that. We have to.
The advisory. I mean, so we, we have a few people that we, through the years, have gotten from Mon County, but we've also lost a considerable amount. So, we have a few that they work part-time in Brewston or full-time for Pam and they come up and pick a few shifts up there. So, like Pam said, the pool is very small in this county.
That's what I was going to ask. How many part-timers, what's your ratio of like part-timers to full-timers?
We have two full-time.
So, that's what I'm saying. What if, you know, if they do, if most of your staffing is part-timers and they would go work for the county full-time to get their benefits and they would still work for you part-time, it really wouldn't be robbing your people. They're at Mon County now. What if they, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying.
If you take their calls, then Brewston would be making the money. If you, if they, those people could be put on full-time in Brewston, they can afford to do that, then Brewston's making the money.
I think our point of a county rain system is to pick up in the areas where the services have been dropped, like Tunnelton, Valley, Newburg.
Okay. All right. Um, I'm just not, I mean, you're going to, you're talking about taking all of our, I mean, if, we can't exist on Kingwood line.
Yeah, because they're covering their areas now.
We're covering those areas. We've done it for years.
That's what the South Truck covers a lot of the Newburg town.
But you, if you had a county truck, you could row it around to different places. So, like if you had trucks that was, you know, you didn't have a crew today, for example, you could move it to Brewston. Maybe you could move it to Terada if you didn't have anybody, or you could move it to, you could leave it central and if they had, you know, if you go out of town.
I understand what you're saying, but where are you going to get the people to staff it from?
Well, I, I receive a lot of communication from people that do no longer work in Preston County that are willing to come back to the county to work. I don't think that that's completely going to fix everything. Um, and this might not even be, I don't, I don't like the whole like dialogue of county-run system. It's, it's because it's not a, at all. I mean, if, if there was, um, any appetite, which I don't believe there is, to put, to force you guys to close your doors, that is a terrible misconception because we cannot afford, nor can the people of this county afford to be a county-run system in its totality.
I understand that, but, but what you're, you're going to do by taking our people and the people that you're having dialogue with, um, a lot of people have left this county because they were made to leave this county. They're not people that.
I wouldn't a hundred percent agree with that.
I mean, I don't know any of the background. So, that means.
That's fine. I mean, we can have a private discussion if you'd like. Um, there are several medics and E N Ts that weren't up to the standard in this county and medical directors have forced them out, um, and that kind of thing. So, you have to be careful.
So, are you saying, are you, I mean, are you completely, um, against the county enhancing what you guys are already doing? Because if you are not running, if you're running twenty out of twenty-four, what's wrong with having coverage for four?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying I'm against taking our people.
I don't even come close to paying that. I'm the lowest paid squad in the county.
Okay, so then we need to look at those figures because we've had that dialogue in these meetings. What can we do to get the pay scale across the board? What would that take as far as additional tax revenue to get your pay scale to where you're not competing with someone else?
If there was, with this funding and if some of it did go to a county trust, that would just be a portion of it. The other funding would be to raise your guys' standards up to something where you could compete for, um, compete with neighboring counties with employment.
But we're not going to be able to compete with you giving retirement and, you know, all of that stuff. We're not.
Yeah, but I mean, right now Pam, if you look at it, I mean, I'm, but Taylor County pays retirement. They pay all that. I mean, you're losing people to there.
And look at the people we've lost.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, but still, we lose people to Mon County because of the benefits they pay as well. That's why I'm saying them trying to get the benefits up or trying to get.
Get our people back and they could assist more.
Competitive with those counties, to me would be, I mean, if you're more competitive with them, then, you know, there are some, like you said, they're just want to get rid of anyway, but there's some that, you know, maybe you wanted to keep, you know, so.
Very, very careful about who you bring back into the county.
Well, I don't think that anybody's ideas here today are, are wrong. I mean, I think that that's all something that we do work close to. But I think it would just be, if we, if you're wanting to buy a county ambulance, and that's not including the people, the salaries that would go with it, you're probably talking close to four hundred thousand dollars to buy a truck and completely stop it. Am I right?
No, more, plenty more.
Um, and that, those kind of costs for right now, I think should just kind of stay within the county here that we can build up what we have and then we can start working towards the other things. And I know you all have to try to look at a round figure, but, I mean, those are the things I think are important first. Like, like Camp and Terada, or I mean, Brewston and Terada would both have, um, two crews on.
Well, I, I completely agree with that. That's where we're trying to get there.
Which if the people were there, we could. That's the problem. It's right now I'm down two full-time positions. I've got my part-time.
But I think when looking at, um, you know, a levy or an ordinance, I think that that is, is part of that. I think that's not, you guys are providing the service. You're doing it. Um, we could do better if there was additional funding. That's why you need some sort of additional assistance.
And if there were additional people, that's what I said at the beginning. It's a people problem.
Has, has everybody that you have lost to another area or county, have they all been terrible? I mean.
Ninety percent of them, yes.
I.
You can disagree with me all you want. I've been doing this thirty years. You know, I've been doing this five, six years.
How about Brewston? How about you? The people you lose to Morgantown, they're, they're good people, right?
Well, yeah. I mean, we haven't really lost that many. I mean, some of the ones that are over there are still.
Fifty, fifty.
Still with us, yeah.
Fifty, fifty, the ones that left and what they're.
Yeah, and the, the holes that we have of gaps right now is where, um, two of them moved away, you know, right, um, those kind of things.
The, the fact of the matter is, is there's still a lot of work to do. There's a lot of work to do, additional facts to, to get ironed out. But assisting you guys ultimately, whether it be, um, with hard cash or, you know, with another sort of assistance is, is important. We've got to figure out the happy medium here. Um, and so, I, I really, I really, I do feel that a county truck take away, take out of your mind, um, oh my gosh, you're going to take all my employees.
How can we do that?
Well, that's just, that's just a, a portion of it. Take that part out of there. The Preston County Commission is and could enhance what you guys are doing by being that backup, that assistance. That, you don't believe that?
I don't believe that. I believe you're going to sink a lot of money into that that could fix the problems within the squads that we already have. I mean, you look at that there, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year for one truck.
Oh. And, and I kind of agree with you a little bit in that regard, because when we were looking at these numbers way back when, when you showed us the different things from the advisory, the number we came up with that was your shortfall, okay? And I just did a rudimentary thought, looked at each one of your agencies and said, okay, this is what I'm billing for, but this is what I'm getting. Here's the difference, and it was eight hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars. Well, the thought I'd always had before is what can we do just to get to that point? If we were just to do something where we rate the fee or levy to get six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars and then disperse it between the different agencies, it would, it wouldn't completely cover it all. It would cover a big chunk of it.
Justin, on the, the sheet on the bottom, okay, so backing up just a little bit, um, talking about, you know, what it would look like, because it's never been my desire to put you guys out of business, um, ever. And, um, looking at, you know, getting the contracts, the areas, uh, completely, you know, worked out uh, to where you're covering and what you're supposed, your first due, I guess is what you would call that. Um, I mean, the, the problem that the County Commission has faced is you put money in and there's a potential, we, we can't make you stay open. You could say, you know, guys, I put in however many years you've operated and I'm, I want to retire and I'm going to be done with this. What happens to equipment, infusions of tax dollars, uh, federal, different funding? If, if anybody would ever get to that point, what happens? We, we, we've started in a way that we're saying, if you close your doors, that comes back to the county. That piece of equipment we purchased comes back to the county. Um, because we.
If you're getting liquid money.
Because what has happened is Mount near closed, Tunnelton closed.
What was left of Mount near there? What name did Band-Aid left from Mount near?
You look at, at the charters, in, in every agency's charter, it says what has to be done with the assets.
Yeah, but so did Mount near and what happened with it? Nothing.
I, I guess Commissioner, Commissioner Samantha's saying, saying is if, um, funding was to be provided, taxpayer money, whether it's a levy or an ordinance, um, that funding in a roundabout way, if you guys shut down, is going to have to come back to the county because then we're obligated by code to provide that service.
And I'm sure if you sat down with the squads, that we can come up with some sort of agreement.
Well, that, that would be an agreement across the board. If there's an infusion of funding into the organization, we have to have a contract between the County Commission and each individual organization to, to, that, that protect not only us, but more so protect you. I mean, this is a two-part, um, you know, road and we have to make sure that we're doing the best by the citizens in the county foremost, but that we're protecting you and we're protecting us.
And, and I don't think, I know, speaking for my board of directors, I don't think anybody there would have a problem signing a contract stating, if Camp Central Ambulance Service would go under, all assets would go to the county.
Well, that, that's good. We just wanted to put that out there.
I don't, my board would not have any issue.
Kind of like the, what we have going with the Mason Town Volunteer Fire Department and Union right now. It could be tangible assets, so physical property that would come back. Or if, um, you were gave just, um, money, that would come back.
I think the contracts too also had coverage clauses in them and stuff on that, when and how it would be covered and that kind of stuff too as well.
And we talked about that before.
Justin, just because your perspective is just a little different, uh, can you just kind of outline what the true benefits of a, of a, just a truck? Not a county-run system, but a county truck, what kind of benefits outside of employee stuff? And, and, you know, that, what would it look, what would be the true benefits of that?
Well, they've done that in, um, Hampshire County. That's, there's been a few counties that have done that and basically they just backhaul. So, um, you know, if the, the squad that's covering that area can take the call, they, I mean, they, they start on it at the same time. And if they, they can't get there or whatever, then they let that squad have the call and have the money. But if they're like out on a transport or out on another call, they backfill and you can kind of row your truck around. So, let's say Pam's got a truck in Fellowsville and it goes out, you know, we could shove the truck down there till they get back maybe off of a call or, or like I said, if somebody's out, they'll, they can move that truck around. And I honestly think one of the biggest assets of a county truck is, is because you all have the responsibility to provide EMS to the county. They could just up and say, we're done today and, and, and fold. I don't think any of these will, but you don't ever know who the administration will be afterwards, you know, and if they fold and you don't have a, you don't have any,
Anything.
anything to start on at all. So, um, I mean, I think that's one of the biggest benefits of it is you can, you can back them up. So, basically if they can't get out on the call, uh, you can shove that truck to different spots or, you know, you've got a snowstorm coming, you can put it up there. Uh, maybe in Aurora or somewhere or Terada, if you know there's a big event at Brewston, maybe you could shove it down there or, you know, if they, uh, you know, have a truck out or something and you know there's going to be bad weather coming, you could, you could push that truck to different spots throughout the county.
If you have one county truck doing that, that's all well and good, but what if you supplemented these squads and you had two more county trucks doing that?
We are, we are supplementing.
Well, if we start bringing wages and paying budget, paying benefits, you're still going to be the same number that they got though. Like six, if, if you come apples to apples, it doesn't matter if you pay it or they pay it, it's still going to be the same wage because you're still going to have to pay benefits and you're still going to pay wages.
But if you supplement them and she has another truck, she has another truck and I have three trucks full-time, we're not competing against each other for people. You see what I'm saying? The, the trucks are already there. The equipment's already there. We just need the people to put in them. You're not putting out this six hundred and some thousand dollars to start up a, a truck. You know, that's what I'm saying.
It don't matter. You're putting it into one or the other. It's still going to come out washed because you're going to either, they're going to go give it to you and you're going to put an extra truck on or they're going to put a truck on. It's still going to come out the same wage, the same benefits if they bring you up even. So, it really doesn't matter who's paying. It's still going to be the same dollar figure.
And then at the end of the day, by state code, the County Commission is responsible to provide an EMS system.
So, you'd rather have one extra truck than three in the county. That's what I'm saying is the stuff is already there.
It doesn't matter which side it's on.
Oh, my God. You're not understanding what I'm saying at all. You know, the trucks are there. They just need staff. Instead of buying new trucks and buying new equipment, we need the people to put the trucks. They're sitting idle in the county.
You have the equipment. You just need the people.
Yes. The trucks are sitting idle in the county. They're already here. We need the people to put in them.
And apart with putting on the second truck, and I understand what you're saying, but looking at from my perspective, I had seventy-nine calls last night, last month. Only thirty-two of those were tear-out calls. So, me backfilling for Pam up into Brewston, going to Union, that's what helps keep my doors open too and the transports.
Sure, it does. But when you're back feeling, if she's out and she's doing something and you're back feeling to help keep your doors open, um, what does that look like then in your area?
Yeah, I have multiple staff that live in the area that respond. I get a lot, good many, not as much now, but I have a good many second-out crews.
That if they could be paid to be in stations in the city at home, she would have that crew cover her area while she's backfilling, while we're in wherever. You know, that's.
But then you come down to the resource allocation part again. You've got two trucks in one area when you needed it somewhere else too. I mean, resource allocation is a huge piece of this because.
You're not going to always be in the exact spot you need to be.
You're exactly right. You'll never hit a hundred percent, but when we know there's places that we can do this to get these forty-five minute, you know, even though we're saying we're getting out in a hundred and twenty minutes, there's still five hundred of them or whatever it was that's greater than forty-five minutes. And I say if we go down to thirty minutes, we're going to see even a bunch more holes. So, that's the part we got to tackle with the patient care part, trying to get an ambulance somebody as quick as we can.
The biggest part of ours is going to Brewston, going to the prison, going to Pisguy. If they had another truck sitting in Brewston.
Well, we're not, we're not saying we're not giving them a second truck.
That's what we're saying though. Why waste all this money on the county truck?
So, so what is, okay, so back away from responding to emergencies and go back to our hospital. Talking about transports, I've been in a lot of meetings where people were talking about the transports and how they killed you guys and it's, it's difficult to, you know, do that. Um, is that also if we are able to bring Mon Health into the system to keep any type of levy or ordinance fee relatively low and we can get Mon Health to buy in as far as money to give to the County Commission, they're going to want a sure thing.
And most times it is a sure thing. Where we're having to struggling with these transports is when they want us to go to Ohio and the Southern Portland State, Kentucky and those kinds of places. Nobody can do that.
How often is that, does that happen?
It's getting more, especially with your pediatric psychiatric patients, you know, place low there will accept them. I know in the last year I've taken, we went two south and I've taken two to Ohio, but it has to wait until we can put on a second crew because I won't take my one-duty crew to go that far.
Sure.
That's where we're struggling with transports.
And how, and, and a county, a county system couldn't help in some of that to make sure that we're doing what needs to be done out of the hospital also? I mean, I think it's a big, I think it's a lot of moving parts, but I think it all works together.
It does, but it's not going to. Go ahead.
You got something, though?
Well, I think we're getting off track here. What county needs to provide emergency medical services? I.e., you call an ambulance, you need an ambulance, they come. The hospital, that's where I've worked. That's the hospital's problem, not the county's.
Right, right.
The county, and it's funny that you say Mon Health System, that's Preston Memorial, correct? They own an ambulance service. There should be a problem with transport out of there.
Well, in our.
With the same health system that owns an ambulance service.
That they refuse to come up and take those transports.
Exactly.
But if they take it from you guys, you'll go under because that's a lot of things.
Now, talking about these long-distance transports.
I'm just saying, if you throw that in their plate and say, you guys need to worry about yourself, and they cut ties and you guys are going to be. I'm just saying, if you throw that in their plate and say, you guys need to worry about yourself, and they cut ties and you guys are gonna be out of luck there. Cause that's a lot of money, that's a lot of revenue.
What I'm saying, they can't throw it back at us and say transports are an issue when it's not. Nine times out of ten, it's these long-distance things that are a problem.
I'm just saying, the hospital is, is a valuable resource to the county. And, um, I believe Preston County deserves some funding to help assist EMS in our county. Just like they fund one point five million dollars in Mon County, and Ruby gives one point five million dollars in Mon County. I think they're here, they're an asset to the county as it is, but they should be in some way assisting us to assist you. And I think that there's a lot of great ideas here, and I really feel that this is a work in progress. I think that, um, at the end of the day, being able to, and being ready to respond is the most important thing. You guys are doing it. Justin, if you can pull back up our map and go, and I'm gonna go back to this, you know, forty-five minutes is a slap in the face to you guys. There might be that, for instance, that it took that long, but it's a slap in the face what you guys have been doing. Let's go back to the map, take a look at that and plug an extra place anywhere. Because I believe an additional truck would be like that rover. Wherever you guys can't be, that's where you be. And take a look at what that would look like as far as the response times. We would probably get closer to the national average on response if you add that one rover piece in there.
Well, then you have the rover, like, we have that motocross thing that's huge up there. Getting in and out of that is a nightmare. Um, but if there was, you know, you could have the county sitting there, they have the.
Well, the bad part about it is they're, they contracted ambulance service that won't transport and then they're still responsible. County ambulances are still responsible for it.
My question is too, who's gonna fund all that? Because you're not gonna break even on a rover truck pedal. You're gonna be running them all over the county, you know what fuel prices are.
And that's where the funding from the hospitals that you are talking about.
Cause I think it's, you know, I know that a lot of you think that it's a waste of time to go and lobby in Charleston for, for funding and, and whatever. But I'm here to tell you that it's not a waste. And I think that eventually we're gonna get to where, and hopefully, might not be this session, but that doesn't mean it stops. We have got to advocate for what we need, or if we, if we don't ask, the answer's always gonna be no. And so, you know, I think that to make Preston, because of our demographic and, you know, how rural we are all over really, you know, it's difficult, um, to adequately sur, to survive. I mean, it's just difficult to survive in all areas. And I think that it's gonna be a combination of partnerships between county funds, state funds, um.
Private entities.
The hos, the hospital, um, you know, different organizations to get the funding so that you're not struggling anymore. Nobody wants to put anybody out of business or cause things to struggle. If we can get things structured, maybe we'll be more attractive to some of these people. Maybe, just maybe, other areas will want to come to Preston County to work. I think it's a pretty great place. I don't, you know, I've just, we've just gotta get there. And it's gonna take a good combination of a lot of things going in the right direction. And until we, uh, take a look at every avenue and figure out what is gonna be the best fit for us, I don't think we're ever gonna, I, I mean, I hate that Brewston, you know, is wondering, will we be open in a year? I don't think anybody wants that type of uncertainty. We can't have that type of uncertainty, thank goodness you guys are providing the service. I mean, I just leave it at that. Dawn, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'm really.
I mean, I think I'm holding out a little bit for the end of this legislative session, there's a lot of good, um.
Oh, I do have something to add on that note. I don't see a damn thing coming out of legislature to help you all.
There's some, there's some deals right now that if you never try, you never know. Every bill that's down there has failed multiple times and you have to work hard to lobby for them.
I know.
I mean, it may not come out of this session, so I'm just saying, and I'm agreeing with Samantha, that there's a possibility. And then moving forward, we're gonna have to look at either a levy or an ordinance.
And, and I know the last thing that the governor did was, you know, we talked about this.
With the training.
That, that the money and how things were allocated and, and whatnot. But that's not what we're advocating for, you know, just, you know, money so that they can tell you, you know, what exactly you can do with it. We're advocating for an infusion of dollars that can go into funding positions and people, keeping people.
So, for example, there's like a Senate Bill four twenty, what is it, four twenty-nine out there right now. Right now, a safety and health fee, which would add a dollar fee onto certain things in the county. Half of that goes to fire department and half of it goes to EMS, to the County Commission to put out into the community. That's the kind of stuff we're advocating for.
It's, it's just a, a part of it that could and could not, and we have to prepare for it not. But if it does, how great will it be, you know? That's part of it. And so, four twenty-nine, is that what it is, four twenty-nine?
Yeah, four twenty-nine, Randy Smith, sponsored by Jay Taylor.
So, Ju, Justin, show us with the extra, put all of our organizations that are currently serving.
You want a ten-minute one?
Yeah, uh, we're over there. I would like to see them do one on just the national average specifically.
So you want something with a fifteen-minute?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask that.
I mean, we can't get to the national average, obviously, and, and so there's a buffer anyway, if I understand correctly.
I understand what you're saying, I'm not trying to fight against you, but, but what I'm saying, what I don't understand is, you know, what, if that truck's up there backfilling Brewston, what happens if my truck in the south goes down? If we don't, if we don't get all of our, our trucks up and running.
Then maybe you go central and cover the biggest bulk you can. I know a lot of people will say Kingwood gets everything, but honestly, it's central and you can really make tracks from there for.
But then you're saying you want us to cut down response times to Brewston, to Pisgah, to whatever. It doesn't make sense to me.
Once, once first thing gets a second truck, that's probably gonna cut a lot of the Pisgah situation out, isn't it?
Yes, but we have to have the people go on that job too. And that's where we're at.
I, I mean, we've talked about a lot of scenarios, um, and all of them could work. All of them could be detrimental in their own ways, there's pros and cons to everything. And I think that we've looked at solutions, but we haven't spearheaded the problem at all. We've danced around it, but we haven't looked at the main problem at all. The main problem is we have to establish an environment where people want to be, because we need people. You can, today, Bill Gates could walk in here and hand you five hundred million dollars and say, here, run your EMS system. Okay, now you have the money, where are you gonna get the people? And you gotta keep the people, that's the problem, is keeping people, it's itchy. And I've heard the dance around, uh, Mon County a couple of times today, Mon County has the same problem.
Oh, it's everywhere.
They all, everybody has.
We hired, I work in Mon County, we hired twenty people a week. Every week they have a class of people that start. Half of them don't stay, the other half of them work for a little while and then move on. Um, the outlining things of having resources in the outlining areas, but you gotta have people to do that.
Yeah.
So we have to figure out what we can do to retain the people before we throw money at anything.
Well.
So I think we need to look at the issue, which is not adequate staffing. Why is people leaving? Why is people not coming in?
We have worked with that.
Why is new people not taking classes? Why is the people that took classes not staying or not running?
Well, that's, that's, that problem is not unique, unique to EMS at all.
No, it's not, it's, it's unique to the average work.
We actually do better with people, I'm eighteen years in, you're thirty years in, you're.
Thirteen eighty-two.
A lot of years in. I talked to a lady from Mon County last week, the week before we went down to help a mom or a patient they brought back from the hospital. She was two years in and she was done.
The average is five years, that was grown out in EMS is five years.
Well, and you don't, it's just like we had a call that our name, I didn't even realize it. I thought they, you know, it was a cardiac arrest and, but, you know, sometimes they'll rattle people, you know? I mean, and they, sometimes they walk off and never see them again, sometimes they get through, sometimes they don't.
I've talked to Dave multiple times years ago, not everybody can do the job we do. Not everybody can go out, you know, I've had the call where I went out and pronounced somebody dead that I went to school with my whole life. Get up the next morning, you go to work and you keep going.
But I want to just say this from a nine-to-one perspective, one of the biggest problems I've seen now in EMS is there is like zero coordination. You and Kelly work together pretty good, but we got, well, is there a truck here, is there a truck here? Nobody knows where trucks are, you know? There needs to be that coordination, so even if somebody's not gonna have a crew, that somebody can kinda plan on it if they can or if they can't. But that coordination needs to be there.
I'm responding, it's supposed to be taken care of that.
Well, it's not, so.
I think that's something with, with the hiring of a, um, county or Preston County EMS administrator. That would help with that.
And there's some that don't.
And the, if we did have a contract, it would help sort a lot of that stuff out. We're not trying to put you out of business, but you guys need to work all as one.
Well, I think the contract is, everybody knows what playing field they're operating on, you know, that's just.
It's too late, it takes both sides.
Well, and going back to like the, the administrator, that, that the county could potentially employ, um, that would offer the assistance to each of your organizations for grant opportunities. Um, when the governor does put stuff out there, you know, that's something that you could plug into.
And that's not just to run if we had a truck on the ground. That's to oversee all our funding, if we had a levy or ordinance, and to help you guys with anything you need.
Yeah, either way, whether we have an ordinance or a levy, we have to have that administrator to do the billing.
And I think.
Which is why I would add, I would urge you to make sure that it's somebody outside the area.
Well, and, you know, we're looking at, at, at multiple things. If we get to that point, I mean, you know, the, if you look at the draft, um, job description, that, that's a draft. And so, please, look at it, if you think that it needs something additional on there, get over to Justin, we'll update the draft.
Yeah, that's the, that's the first draft, um.
Well, just, you know, just like she said, we've, Justin's put hours and hours and hours, but you know, we're letting projects go, we should be working or not.
So we've got to, have to do something there, so. All right, um, does anyone else have any other comments for today that they would like to make? I'm just kinda opening it up, it's not traditionally what we would do, but your input's important, so, um.
To expand on what Sean was saying about creating the environment and stuff, I went to an EMS class. I was sitting there, the room was full of the first people, the lady got up and talked about a situation where, you know, you start off, you're making twelve dollars an hour. Here's, she presented a scenario where they had someone that was on drugs and then they popped him back to. And the lady got kicked out of the back of the truck and ended up concussion. And you know how many people didn't show back up because they're not gonna do this job for twelve dollars an hour and no insurance? I mean, this is a job that really needs to step it up.
Well, it needs to go from a hobby to a career.
Yeah.
It's like nursing, I mean, nursing would do the same thing.
Twelve dollars an hour with the risk you're taking is not a viable wage.
But you gotta go back to the reimbursements.
I think the wages and benefits is the way you solve that, or the best way of solving that.
Well, in those areas in the county, it's just like the truck downtown, it's more to run that truck down there than up here. Because from the bottom part of the county, there's nothing down there to generate any funds. And there's no nursing homes, there's no prisons, there's no anything.
So the cost per run yourself, the cost you have less.
Right.
I don't make a cent, I go in the hole on that, that.
Oh, I don't doubt that bit.
A lot of Medicare, Medicaid pay down that way, so you don't build, you don't get as much return.
Justin, go ahead and click, if we had, uh, all of our crews that are currently serving and then one more at the, at the, and, and do, show the different times.
Well, I mean, this is a ten-minute, so, I mean, you know, if you throw a Mason Town, it's gonna cover that area better. If you throw one in, I'll just pick different spots. Eighty-seven, that's gonna show more area, and this is ten-minute, probably a fifteen-minute would be a little better, you'd have a little bigger footprint, but, uh.
But what if you have two or three extra trucks? What's it gonna?
Well, there's just response time, that's really kinda irrelevant to what.
Yeah, your response time's still be the same, you get two trucks in one spot.
I mean, you need to provide, but the difference is, you know, when one truck goes out, that area still stays lit. Now, when that truck goes out and there's nobody there, you take the caller off because now it's not, there's nobody there to respond.
Goes off and then you.
Then it's you coming, you know, or just saying, just using the example, Brewston goes out on call, then that's what Brewston looks like whenever their truck's out and you're covering, timelines.
But it kinda cuts that down, if Brewston has that second truck, then.
Oh, exactly, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But is Brewston gonna send a truck to Fellowsville if Fellowsville goes out on the call? You know, it's, you know, I mean, I understand what you're saying, if you put two trucks in one station, you're gonna cover that area. But what if, you know, Fellowsville only got one, it goes down, or Terre Haute's got one.
Then you bulletproof Kingwood to come down, I mean, it's.
I know, you guys are gonna do that, you're gonna do that every time.
That's what we do now.
Yeah, but I mean, pull it, just to pull it and send it there.
There's special situations where I think it would just be safe to have a backup like that.
Well, obviously we make no decisions or anything like that in a work session, and there is additional work here to do.
Well, I mean, too, I think we're looking at, you know, getting the people in timely manner versus what we're making money on or anything else. I mean, that's, should be some of what we're looking at, providing, make sure people get service in a timely manner, so. All of them do it.
All right, um, was there anything else that you had?
Yeah, I've got reports and everything. Oh, I think would, if the squads would probably get us out the rest of them like your, that, I mean, I'm seeing.
Yeah, if you get that, you build that, I appreciate that.
What you build and what you bring in to us, so.
Cause that's what we have previously, and that was where.
No matter what happens, you gotta figure out what the deficit is.
And I, I would want to encourage each of you to take a look at, we need to know, um, if we could all get on, like I said, if we could all get on the same page of the pay scale of what you're paying your, you know, different, uh, in the county, your, you know, your different positions and what that looks like. If we were on, under like a, a county, not, just everyone kinda does the same, then you're gonna cut down that competing, you're offering the insurance retirement, if that could be what the gap would fill, um, for whatever, you know, you're asking as far as funding goes from the county to help offset, you know, the issues that you're up against. I think that's important, because I still believe that, um, you're not gonna pull, unless you have a, a, a falling out with your employee, why would they go for the same pay to work for Kelly unless you're, they're having issues with something? They're not going to, if, you know?
There's things, there's issues that we run into, like, people will wanna go to stations that don't take as many calls. They call it a vacation station.
Okay.
Where they go and just sit for most of the day. And that happens a lot. So, and that happens in Mon County because Granville is their vacation station.
Blacksville.
Say Blacksville.
And that, and she's right, she's right, that is what everybody calls our Blacksville Station, is the relaxation station. Because they take, on a, they run twenty-four hour shifts only at that station.
So, I mean, but what is that, a bad thing that that truck's there to cover that area?
No, I'm just saying.
I know.
But she asked why someone would go to another area.
I am, but I think overall, having a level, um, pay and benefits for all, all you guys outside agencies would be a good thing in the long haul.
Yeah, I think people can work as much overtime and go and work for you or her, or whatever they wanna do to, you know, offset their income and do whatever. But if, I mean, to me, that makes the county's portion, um, more beneficial to all of you. Um, and I've, you know, looking at, um, I don't know, I've just always been kinda adamant on if we could get to that level of, um, you know, another thing we need to look at too, you know, is how we're gonna go. We know we've gotta do something to get some additional funding. We have a little bit, um, that we can hold on to, uh, in our cares funding, um, and.
Or possibly pull out of our budget.
And, and some in our budget, or dig into current, uh, you know, money that we have um, to sustain giving contributions to the EMS as it is currently, but to enhance and do better. That's where we've got to, uh, look to the taxpayers for just a little bit more of something, whether, no matter how we go about that.
Well, until you get the better EMS, you know, you're not gonna get industry or, you know, people moving into the area. I mean, it affects a lot larger footprint, so.
And it's the people that move into this area and they, we respond to them and they get their ambulance bill. They don't even question it because they paid that or more somewhere else. But it's the people in this county, you think, oh, well, I'm not paying that, cause that's, that's too much money. Um, but people outside this area understand that a lot better than the people in this county do.
Well, I think you made a good comment. At the end of the day, we're just trying to enhance the service and provide the county with the, with the best service we can.
Anything else from anybody? Do you have anything else? Justin Dwayne? Okay, this work session is turned.